We'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present. Recognition of visitors and guests, we welcome you all here this evening. It's a nice winter evening. 1.3, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for 1.4, correspondence and recognition. I've received no requests for public participation this evening. 1.4, to recognition of students, staff, and community. We have congratulations to Edwards Sierra Perez, an eighth grade student at the middle school, who received fourth place and qualified for the esports state finals to take place at the Mall of America on January 12th. Also, congratulations to Marissa Thier and Ian Barber on being named as AAA award recipients. We congratulate all those honors. Move on to 2.0, approval of agenda. Consent and main.
I move approval of the consent and main agendas.
Motion by Adam.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Lori to approve the consent and main agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0, approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the school board meeting and the committee meetings.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Matt to approve the minutes, the regular board meeting and the committee meeting minutes, as included. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, approval of items on the consent agenda.
Still move, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Erin to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda. 5.1, monthly financial overview. Dave?
You have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of November, so we're now five months into our fiscal year. Now, you can see the revenues are running slightly ahead of the same time last year at just over 35%. The expenditures are a little behind where they were last year at 32%. Everything's pretty much running on budget, and we've had nothing extraordinary or unusual come up so far. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Dave? Hearing done, we'll move on to 5.2, the ICS presentation.
So while Chris is getting things organized there, Chris Zeimer is here from ICS and Pat Overham, which most of you know, and there, if you remember back in, I believe it was about June, we had a work session, we talked about wanting to identify potential projects and where the district may go in addressing some of the needs. And with this, then, the presentation is addressing those needs and what was identified as potential projects to address some of those things. So with that, I think Chris is the one talking tonight, and Pat is the muscle behind it, something like that.
So a quick dis round to your agenda, as John mentioned, we've been asked to look at a series of sites for possible improvements, starting with the old community end, former West Elementary site, potential improvements there, budgets, and then the middle school site as well, and then finishing with ICS. Just a reminder, on this day, we actually took advantage of the district to wait until the month of August, the building this winter, and obviously, weather's been very favorable, but they're looking at starches and big trees, so the building will probably be down in about a month, and I'm pleased to follow up, possibly, if that were to happen. So that brings us to option one of what we could do with that site once the building's gone. The site is big enough to get two U-13 soccer fields on it, and then a regulation varsity level field perpendicular to that that would occur across that. With this option, we still have about 42 stalls for parking, and we'd look to probably relocate the play structures down to the bottom corner, maybe a little after the bottom corner. Any other questions?
I have one question while you're here. There's nothing shown for restroom facilities with that particular option. Would it be depending on the city's facilities then, in this option?
Correct, in this option.
Okay.
As you'll see in the next option issue, you want to comment for it.
Yep, that's why I asked.
The second option would be a varsity softball field. With that, because the softball field that we think about in much area, we get a little bit more parking, around 60 stalls, and then we'd also have room for a kitchen concession building, a toilet facility, and then again, we could still probably look at relocating the play structures down to the bottom corner. So move on to the middle school, any questions?
I have one question, sorry. Thoughts about the closure of Tower Street and that, any discussion over that of...
So, ICS would not be aware of that. The city has discussed the possibility of closing that portion of the street and relocating the restrooms that are over by the skate park. They have that scheduled, the restroom scheduled for replacement. They've been waiting for the district to figure out exactly what we're going to do, and then potentially, if you're going to do something with this, they would like to relocate that to the east side of their property. It may not be so-called on the west side, but, and there is the preliminary conversation of closing Tower.
And potential of sharing the gravel parking as...
Yes.
As a possibility for additional spaces?
Yeah.
Estimated budgets for the two options, I can give you a bigger version of that in 11 by 7. We're looking at about 2.3 for the soccer field improvements that they're showing right now, and about 2.2 for the softball improvements. Middle school improvements, so taking the infield of the track area and making that an artificial turf field, we have secondary turf fields in the district then for practices. With that possibility of needing a pond, so that's just a placeholder there, that would need further investigation. Other improvements there, taking the two ball fields and either combining, mining them into one JV level baseball field. The whiteout area there just shows that either orientation would be possible. And then, there is a little bit of investigation needed, just because of we're entering that grassland. We believe we're dry in that area, but there are somewhat areas back there. The former ditch that's kind of thrown in does run through that area, and there may be somewhat spots, and this year probably isn't indicative of that, but just a little bit of investigation we needed, and it's probably just a matter of buying credits if we chose to do that. And then also addressing some of the lighting over at the varsity field that's heating So again, budgets, we're at 3.2 for the middle school turf, 2.5 roughly for the baseball practice field, and then, just for comparison, at one time, we had looked at putting the varsity field over the ground fence site, I would have provided that budget, because there is actually an area that was graded for a baseball field over there or a field general. So there is some prep work that's been done over in that site, whether it's on a varsity level field or in the future, so it's partly why that cost a little bit less.
Can we see that on this map?
No, that would be south and west, actually, of the new community center.
Okay, okay.
Community end of it.
Got you.
ALCP, and then just to the west, and that we created basically a diagonality. And lastly, improvements at the high school. Last thing we were asked to look at was how would we add to this building? So we looked at classroom addition, and it seems a little odd that it's actually over on the north wing right now, but you'll see why in the next slide. But this is actually eight classroom addition, four on the bottom, four on the top. This would have to be built to the storm shelter requirements, that you're probably familiar with, what we have to do over at the intermediate building. But because it's an E classification for occupancy, we'd be looking at doing that for this portion of the addition only. Any of the other additions don't fit that class definition, so this would be the only area we're looking at upgrading into that. To the left, we'd be looking to bring some of the admin or all of the admin up to the front of the building, and enhancing that entrance so that it actually enters through the best we can through the office, so it's very much like what we have at the intermediate and at the ALC and the community education building. Just provide a more secure entry, and you're not having to walk deep into the building to get to the main office. With that, student services would be kind of off of that. And then, back over to the CTE area, we'd be looking to upgrade those portions of those classrooms, taking all of that storage, creating a new storage addition that can complete that block there, a new freezer cooler or a large freezer cooler, and then actually creating a receiving space, because there actually is a jog in the addition there, so we did close that, so there actually, so we've got a true receiving area. Operating the kitchen, so we remodeled that and actually pushed the servery out into the current student dining area, because student dining is experiencing some pressure. The office space, we moved out of this current location, that will become a new concept, it could also double student dining. And the thinking with that of where it is, is the gym on the one side is a two-story space, the cafeteria actually is a two-story space as well, so it provides the opportunity to raise that rope and then maybe get some clear storage and noise on either side, bring some daylight into the center of the building, so it doesn't feel like you're controlling portions of the building. Then, kind of looking at finding another area to put a science lab, we haven't exactly figured that out, but it is another similar best idea right now. So second level classroom addition again, and then, we're actually looking at tying the second floor of this addition with the north wing new addition, so that that put all the ties on the second floor, and you just walk over and then back down. Whether or not the existing stairs stays in the north wing, get to be determined, because we take care of the stairs in the addition, but if you need their event, flow for students would be a lot easier at this point. They'd be able to, if they're on the second floor, and you get second floor, they'd be able to travel all the way down to the second floor. And then again, the pop-up area where we talked about those student commons, that would be that. Any questions?
What about the updated wood shop and egg shop on the one page? Is all those expenditures, what are we updating there? Are we adding on to it?
Existing space, we'd be looking to enhance, look at whether it's equipment or improvements inside the space. The classroom space is in the middle, there's probably some improvements that would happen there to better serve both metals auto and the wood shop, or whether that's robotics or other things there.
I think previously, when we last remodeled the high school and added classrooms onto this west area, it was built where the classrooms, in theory, could accommodate a second floor. So could you just...
So we built that second floor. Did you cover the building, that's the second floor that you're looking at?
Okay, so nothing more on top of it? That has been exhausted as a possibility?
Yes, just because that would be the only three-story area that can tie as well.
Sure, okay.
And creating kind of more, it would only exacerbate that issue of students having to come all the way down and go over and try to sort the park.
Okay, so westwardly expansion has been fully exhausted, and now we're looking farther into the eastern side. Okay.
So, site plan kind of puts it in perspective where those additions occur. The one thing I did mention, that there is doubted expansion, which is used for the rest of classrooms. In theory, you could keep going with the same classes in the future. All you'd be doing is affecting the east parking lot, which you just have, or you choose not to replace it, so what those needs are, but all this shows that there is some room for the north yet to expand the parking, and you still maintain past areas that show the soccer fields right there. It looks like it would still be.
Just a quick question on the staff parking there to the east.
Yep.
So, we would lose all the, not all that, but a portion of staff parking on the east.
You actually don't, with the first addition, you really don't lose a lot.
Okay.
What you're building over, is there's a light rod generator sitting there right now?
Okay.
We'd be affecting a little bit of the parking, so that's still the reason to look to maybe the north to bump it up a little bit.
Okay.
And then potentially, length of two lots, just for snow removal and, you know, add some bulk benefits to try to get some of those things to be a little bit better in the future.
A question, maybe more for John. In some of the planning discussions we've had before, there was discussion about the main entrance, the south entrance, and potentially redoing that. Was there any thought of including that into this programming?
Well, it's a matter of how much you want to spend and how far you want to go. Eventually, at some point, the circle or whatever, the driveway up that front part's going to need to be addressed, and how you do that, and there's some potential for some added benefits there, but again, it's going to come down to how much.
Sure. I just bring it up because, to me, it should be part of a package, you know, address the whole building now, is my thought, even though it does add a price, but...
We could definitely investigate that further. We did some initial investigation and kind of moved to this, but we can definitely bring that back in, or we could...
And again, what Chris has put together for design of classrooms and things, I want to caution, this is just really preliminary. It's looking at possibility, it's not set in stone, it's not, there's going to be a lot of potential changes before we would get to a final plan. And part of my conversation with Chris and Pat was, I didn't have a good vision of how to do this. Most of the additions, I've been able to see and figure out and be able to express that as we planned, but this one, I struggled just because of the way of the design and the number of additions on this building. And Chris did a good job of trying to put it all together and accomplishing the connectivity of our second story, which is a big piece in my mind. You know, kids having to go downstairs and then back upstairs to get to a class, it's a time element.
And this plan does not do anything with the existing field and the green up next to the parking lot? Just maintains it?
It's pretty good to the top.
Right.
It engrosses slightly, but what I was testating was that you can still fit that field.
It does still, what counts is the soccer stacks.
It's actually, well, it's not what you call a varsity length, it's a little short, but it is still satisfying for other uses.
Exactly how many classrooms does this add, then?
Total of eight right now, based on what we've got that. As I mentioned, you could continue off, so you have a classroom that showed another core, but it's...
Sure.
Kind of stretching out a bit this time.
So them four would be two-story then, right, over here, Chris?
Yeah.
It'd be a two-story level then.
Yeah, it would be a two-story or, you know, maybe if you put four down to one story, it'd be what you did upstairs, the plan for the second level building up in the future as well.
So from the existing building, count out two, and then where it curves, one of those classrooms, so it's the four-first classroom, that, those, and that one right there.
So total cost, keep in mind, this is all of the items we looked at, so that's an online solution, but it's just, it's pretty aggregate of all the things we looked at. Obviously, the admin addition, the admin area remodel, the classroom addition, kitchen remodel, servery, bumping up that commons area. One thing I did mention was, we actually put a budget to invest it further in the north wing, meaning the windows and metal panel on the outside, getting that updated, so it's coming to the end of its useful life. And then also, investing somewhat in the classrooms, case work doors, some of the things that are looking a little tired as well. All things that you could take care of with LTFM, but we figured while we're looking at this one, we started analyzing those things. Numbers, we did put a number two, we're just saying, and banks, I think, or eight. Just again, there's probably some more questions there and any further discussion, but there are some needs potentially in that area. And then, just putting placeholders in for technology, security, you could even add classrooms on. The good thing with the entry up here is that you really wouldn't be losing the security invested in already, or you can do it if you're looking at it. So it would integrate very well. And then, obviously, a total number on the bottom, but again, that's a aggregate of everything we looked at, and choices could be made during that.
The HVAC system has capacity, or that would have to be increased?
So we'd be, it'd be a combination of reusing existing HVACs, possibly upgrading in certain areas. The classroom additions would have their own age base. Pat, pardon me from wrong, but the north wing had an IHG segment out too long ago, so those units are up to date. And then, obviously, the addition, everything's up to date, so we've got pretty good capacity. Again, we're just looking at where we need to decrease a little bit or supplement, and...
Okay, any further questions?
He's still got.
Chris?
You want to talk about timeline?
So we just thought we'd throw this slide in there, just in terms of what, if you were to go to a bond for all of this or a portion of it, the new deadline that the, I just like to put it in place, didn't talk about any, I should move the date up. So really, what we realistically be looking at is the August, which would be a pretty intense push for November election, which, given the political climate, I'm not sure if you're actually pushing on that, but at the same time, I see what the...
And again, on this, I do want to mention at least a few things. One, there are some options you can, to help lessen a bond referendum or take your approaches, you could utilize some of your assigned fund balance. For the kitchen piece of the puzzle, there is some reserve dollars that you could utilize to help offset the costs of a kitchen remodel and the kitchen work. It won't cover it all, but it'd offset. LTFM bond, you could approach it through that. I am going to caution you a little bit about that one, because on Agland, they don't get 70% credit. So that's a possibility. Likewise, the lease levy, it's the exact same thing. And if I estimate it correctly, we would probably have about $14 million in lease levy authority that we could utilize. And then, lastly, abatement bond, which again, remember, Agland wouldn't receive the 70% So, again, if you choose to move forward with something like this, you go to voters to get approval, or you can choose to go another route and use the authorities you have to do this work, and you just have to realize at that point, Agland wouldn't receive So questions you have for Chris, or Pat drove all the way down, you got to give him at least one question.
So, Mr. Landguard, you're saying that if we were to finance this project, it would be to Agland owner's interest to do it through a bond referendum?
Correct, absolutely. That, with the fact that they started out at 50%, now it's 70%, that's a huge benefit for Agland owners. You know, they still contribute towards the bond, but it's substantially less than where it was.
So if we can build momentum and consensus for such a project, that I think there would be, in theory, like, it'd be advantageous to do it through a bond?
That would be my recommendation, because it benefits the Agland, and that way voters have a say, but on the same token, you could probably fund most, if not all, this through other avenues, which then does have an impact on Agland. Doesn't mean you can do other projects, but you can do this. And of course, other projects necessarily, like a baseball field or a softball field, don't really qualify for lease levy use, so...
Didn't we promise the voters a few years ago that we'd never do another lease levy again to the district? And now we're sitting here talking lease levies again?
I really have a problem with lease levies, because of the Ag side not getting the credit.
I feel if we can't finance this through a referendum bond, we shouldn't be doing it.
I'm giving you the options, I'm not promoting...
I'm stating my opinions. Because if we also, as a school, have other projects we are working on, how do we plan on financing other projects? We can't lease levy every project we want to do.
Yeah, the only ones that qualify are the academic side, so...
So as long as we're talking on funding and all these projects, this hockey arena thing, what's the plan on financing this? How's a school going to finance their share?
That would be up to your choice, that's part of the, you could utilize part of your assigned fund balance.
So this spring, we kept talking about operating referendums. We were concerned about not having enough money in the future. All of a sudden, that's all been forgotten, and all we are is in a spending mode right now. We want to spend, spend, spend. When are we going to quit spending money? We can't keep burdening the district five... We can't keep burdening the District 518 people.
Mr. Chairman, a question back to the longer-range vision. I think that the, with past expansions, the high school is going to continue to be the high school. I mean, and then looking at population projections and those kinds of things. And you talked about the potential of more classrooms. I'm just wondering if, do you ever reach a point where you've added on too much to a building? Or is there just no limit to the number of times you can add on?
Well, then it would be a bit of a, like.
Sure.
I mean, there's ways to keep adding.
Right.
That's a smart thing or not. And parking obviously would be your biggest challenge. The one thing I did mention, forgive me, is this was done in the idea that you're investing in this building, how that could be a different high school. This is a long-term investment, but I actually decided to launch it in a modern high school that feels your district's driving out of there.
Mr. Chairman, I got another question on this high school project. In the past referendums, when we were talking about adding on to the high school, it was not an option because of green space. Well, how, what's the option now? What are we doing now for green space?
You still have green space, it's just slightly.
So how come five years ago, we couldn't do it? Why, what changed? Why can't we do it now?
Probably looking at bigger additions at the time. And probably not looking at a two-story addition out in North Wing. That was kind of the aha moment as we investigated this further, that's why it makes a lot of sense. You actually save some, some land, you're not eating up as much land. And now you've got, you know, it doesn't mean you don't have a challenge in the future to work on, but you continue adding on.
So what you're telling me tonight is, five years ago, the big push was for new buildings, not remodeling? Because back then, the big problem was green space. Now, tonight, it's not a problem with an addition.
Sure.
Yes.
One of the things, I think, if you look at that, is where the buildings are being placed is already taken up by impervious surface. So you're not taking more green space, you just reuse the impervious surface you already have, and you're leaving the, most of the green or almost all the green space intact as it is. So that, I think that makes a big difference in explaining, you know, what's happening. They're not really taking green space at this point.
You also have the corrosion site, which you had just purchased, and now you have the availability for future fields out there. So you haven't really lost green space, you just haven't taken advantage of the land you have right now to make future fields.
Thank you.
One of the things I guess I would mention is, as we've added to this building and as classrooms have been added to this building over time, the focus has been classrooms, right? One of the things that this contemplates is catching you up with some of the core spaces, your kitchen and cafeteria, your kitchen, your cafeteria.
And some of the internal spaces, the circulation, those things obviously really help total capacity. So to your earlier question, you could continue to add classrooms, but at some point, those core spaces are really a bit circuitous, at least.
I have a question for, like, the principal here. The current building as being used now, we're seeing shortages of space. I mean, we, what needs do you see that are becoming critical, you know, for education?
We have a number of traveling teachers. So we have spaces, for instance, in our science room. We have five teachers with five, or we have six teachers with five classrooms, one lab. So extension of that would be beneficial. But we do have a number of, I'd call traveling teachers that are actually on a physical cart that have to move from space to space. We use all of our classes, I mean, very rarely, if we come here, there'd be more classrooms because we fill them. So yeah, the continuation of the population of our building, I think we will level off at probably 1,100 for the next four, five, six years, as the Land Guard has shown us projections. Again, I think a lot of this is in the internal space, our cafeteria, the kitchen. If you go back in the kitchen, I'm amazed at the people that work there and the conditions that they work in, they do such a great job. But it needs to be updated, that kitchen space needs to be updated. The other spaces that need to be updated are also on this plan. So yes, classroom spaces is something that we need to continue to look at. And that's what this plan looks at, is the addition of classroom spaces. I would, of course, I would want more if I could have my other space. This would be at least a benefit for the students that we have. When we expanded this first addition, we built with the ability of going up, and we have filled those spaces with the upstairs, being our social studies department, and our downstairs with our business and our health classrooms. So we do build these spaces. And we do have traveling teachers.
Okay, thank you. Laurie?
Yeah, this is for John. Our enrollment projections, I know we're going to talk about enrollment probably a little bit later, but the study that we did is five years old now, four years old on the enrollment study. Are we tracking pretty much with that? I just haven't looked at it for a while.
So the enrollment study itself was done, I believe, yeah, you're pretty close, four years ago. That might, it might be three. But if you look at where the enrollment's running, it's running pretty static to the enrollment study. Out at year FY '27, after that point is when the study shows that there's slow growth. And that, what slow growth means, I can't tell you at this point without looking at the study again. It's probably in the neighborhood of 60 kids a year. But when you look at the high school where it's at, we're drawing in kids from both the private schools and the Ron Lake Brewster School. That's where our high school enrollment continues to stay high. And it's tracking between that 1,050 to 1,150. And I don't see that changing. That's where it's going to track for now and potentially go higher. As Mr. Prins has mentioned, when we talked about building a new high school in the, that 2015 referendum, that was for 1,200 students. It was building it to the point of meeting those needs. And again, this is my personal view, but because that didn't pass, we're now having, we've addressed everything from K up to eight, but 912 is still, we've addressed some of it by adding on to this building. That's what the community wanted. And the enrollment's still, they're full. You go to the hallways, you go to the cafeteria, it's busy. There are a lot of kids. It's not as bad as it was because of the additions, but the hallways are full. And this is one of those solutions. And in my view, it's becoming more costly than if the 2015 referendum had passed. Now, again, that's my personal opinion. I have no documentation to show that, but I'm sure if I start doing the math, it'll probably be equal to. And again, the community likes this building. There are a lot of history here, there's a lot of opportunity, so you have to take care of it. And you have to move and provide the spaces for it. And again, whether it's now or a couple of years down the road, that's what you guys get to decide. I don't get to decide that.
How many classrooms can we potentially put on then? Is it 12 or is it 14?
16 or more.
Really?
Yeah. You could probably easily put another bank of eight and then another eight on top of that before you get to the proper line. Obviously, again, you start looking at parking and some challenges there, but it's feasible.
So what do you think, Tony, is the ideal number of classrooms you would like to see?
Don't go there.
Put him on the spot.
You're putting me on the spot and in front of my bosses as well, too. I think back to when I was the assistant principal at the middle school, and the original plan was to build, I think, six. We ended up building 10. We filled it. I think if the original, this plan would be eight, I would, I'd like to see a 12. I think we could fill it. We are able to spread out and fill these spaces and make them conducive, obviously, to student learning. Obviously, there's parameters and guidelines that we have to fit into as well. Another science lab would be great. Another lab for our VAX classes would be great. There's a lot of needs for our CTE programs as well. So there's a lot of needs within this building. This would be a way in which we can cover some of those needs. Yes, I'd want to shoot for the stars, but I know that there's parameters that you have to go by as well, and there's a number of dollars. I, obviously, we want to work on some of that internal, like I said, the cafeteria over here, it's pretty full. So obviously, configuration of the cafeteria, the kitchen space is a big deal as well, too. Having, I'll go there, just having gender-neutral bathrooms facilities would be a great addition to this building, because there's only a couple in certain spaces, so I'd like to have that more of a norm as well, too. So yes, I'd like to go maker, but I know that there's parameters that you guys have to follow as well. So I would like to see a couple more classrooms, but again, that's just my opinion, too.
Sure.
Steve?
I, just to throw it out there, too, as I've had some people asking me about if we do anything with the high school, are we going to do anything more with the weight room? I've been told that it's insufficient for the number of students that want to use it. And I think back not too many years ago, I also heard that it's hard to conduct classes in there as far as training kids with weight equipment and stuff and getting them going through the program. So I'll just throw that out there, too, although I don't know where you'd go with it or what you do expand where it's at or whatever, but maybe keep in mind, too, it's possible that we might hear some input about expansion of some existing programs that we have, and that might add to our challenge, too, especially on what part of the building do you locate them and how do you go about doing that? So this, what we're talking about right now is stuff that's kind of on the radar. And then underneath all that, there's other things, as we talk about the supporting, supporting programs that we have, that we want also keep in mind that these things are going to, if we start planning new ideas and new things will come popping out of the woodwork with people having ideas about, well, why can't we address this or help that a little bit, too, for programs we already have? So just throw that out there.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Tony, and I put you on the spot again, Tony. What's the class size? How many students in a class?
It varies, it depends upon classes. We try to cap them at 30, 32. Not to say that all classes are that big, but I'm, most of our classes range from probably 18 at the lowest end, up to 32, 33 at our higher end. It depends, some of our EL classes will vary in size, some of our advanced classes might vary in size, but we try to keep it fairly balanced. I always push the teachers to their capacity, though. And if we need to have another section, that's when sometimes I'll split a class in half and have possible overloads for a teacher as well, too. But it just depends, if it's a spec classroom, typically those numbers are a little lower. But if it's a general class, we go 30, 32, 33 typically.
So the additional classrooms, they would kind of eliminate the traveling teachers then? They'd be, they'd be, have a classroom they would be in all the time then?
Yeah, it would help with having, like, departments centrally localized, too. So then there's more collaboration, there is ability to help one another cover classes with that collaboration. Like I said, this, when we put on the new addition that upstairs, that's where we have the social studies department. So allowing teachers to have, like, a department, so kids kind of know where the general facility is. But we do have teachers poppin' from one side, or we try to keep them in certain sections, but that doesn't necessarily happen all the time because of classroom availability. So because classrooms are used, I think 95% of the time.
Thanks, Tony.
So could you reconfigure doing 12 classrooms? I mean, I don't know what you guys think, as long as we're looking, I guess I would like to know what it costs to do the 12 classrooms now, because I agree, if eight's not really the cure, let's bump it up and try and fix the problem a little better if we can. And I don't know how much, how long you want to push this, but I agree with Tom. I'm not going to support lease levy. This has to be voted on, and we need to be able to sell it, and I think we can do it. It's just, but let's look at the 12 classrooms and see what the cost is.
The only thing I look at, Adam, is I agree with the lease levy, but we haven't had a very good reputation of passing referendums the first try. And if we just keep adding to the price tag and adding to the price tag, it's just going to make it harder and harder to pass. I mean, I understand doing it, you know, right the first time, but I don't know.
I guess sometimes a question comes, is it better to do it now and have it done, or to do a part of it and then come back five years from now and do the rest that we need? And then you're paying a lot higher price because the construction costs just don't come down, they always go up. Sometimes you're better off doing it now and having it usable instead of doing a smaller amount and then coming back later on and say, okay, now we're going to do more, where we could have saved a lot of money by doing it right, doing it the first time, putting the space we need, and we can get away from this every year, having to do building projects and stuff. We just keep piecing it together instead of doing a larger picture and getting it done. And if we back off what we should do to make it more palatable or a little cheaper, then we're going to be right back where we were, like we were three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 20 years ago, trying to do it in pieces and paying more and more and more for it each time we do it. I think if we're going to do it, we'd be better off doing it right, getting it done, and getting out of this situation. Like I say, Joel and I can go back, you know, to when we did the elementary school, we did a lot of work back then, and at that time, boy, that price tag was horrendous. It was 20-some million dollars, and my God, you couldn't touch buildings like that for three, four times that amount anymore. And we're in the same situation now. We can piece it together, pay a little bit now and then pay a little bit later, but that little bit later is going to be a lot more than what we like to think. So I think we'd probably be better off really strongly looking at doing it right, getting the space we need in there, so we can back off and get out of this building program for quite a while into the future. I think it'd be better for all of us, so we can concentrate on other things besides building projects.
I agree with you, Steve. It's usually right to do it the first time, but like I was saying, we got to.
But on top of that, I agree, Tom, there is a limit. I mean, you do.
But we got to, we got to.
There's a point where, what can you?
Got to sell this program to the public.
Yep.
I think the way that we would really have to present this idea is that the Ag to School tax credit exists now at a level that didn't exist when we were pitching other referendums. So it's.
Then the next option is lease levy. If, I guess that's where I would want to start. I don't want to start with lease levy. When I got on this board, that was a big ordeal. And I remember Brad Schaefer, he said he will never lease levy again. And I don't want to go there if we don't have to. I'd rather just get the trust of the voters and let's do the 12 classrooms and everything else proposed, see what the price tag is. And can we use any general fund towards this project?
Yeah, that, that's what that assigned account for is, all along, we've been planning for, whether it's this or it's softball field or soccer field or whatever, that's what that money is assigned at this point for.
That was how much, John?
Right now, it's at 17.5.
That we could use on this project?
Correct.
You can't use all of it, can you?
I, I probably would not recommend that, but you could.
Oh, that's right, 'cause it's a sign, it's a sign. That's very, that's very...
So what's the interest rates on bonds right now?
They're settling out a little bit. They're back down into the...
What did we have before when we did the other referendums? What was that at?
Two...
Right about, I wanna say it was about two point two.
Yeah, it was under two and a half.
So if we would wait a year and the interest rates would turn around, is that gonna be enough to offset construction cost?
Well, we're more than a year out from construction.
You're out a year, anyway.
Yeah, but usually when they do this stuff, they hurry up and go bond it instantly. So it would be like at an instant rate now?
Well, you can't bond it to your pants, then, so...
Yeah, I mean, you're right. It's trying to...
It's trying to...
Manage that risk and, and kind of see it into the crystal ball to see what rates are gonna do.
Didn't you bring that crystal ball tonight, Pat?
I didn't. I can give you a crystal ball, but from now until next November, I'm pretty sure there aren't gonna be any huge ones one way or the other.
I think the Federal Reserve last I heard was indicating that they're planning on reducing rates coming into two thousand twenty-four.
Re-reductions.
So, so we're, we're gonna start, hopefully, if everything holds, we'll see a downward trend. But here again, we gotta get the referendum passed. You can't do anything until that happens. And like I said, if we're, we're about a year, who knows, out from there, it'd be good for us. We're gonna get started and get going, so we're prepared to act on it when the time comes.
As with any projects, right, and you guys are now just about all experts, probably here to fund here, six to nine months to design and another couple of years to build. So even if we have funding in hand, you know, we know the drill. It's...
We're not gonna break ground in June? Not gonna break ground first of June? I didn't say what year, did I? Well, I don't wanna say you're gonna sound like I'm totally against it. I'm not. I just have concerns. If I don't voice my opinion, I don't know.
But those are the questions we're all gonna get asked and we need to deal with as we move forward and stuff. We have to have answers and explanations. So it's good to have the questions come out now so we can get answers for them and have, be ready to do the explanation.
I'm just afraid that with the recent land purchase, it's just gonna be hard to pass a referendum. Sorry to be the bad apple.
But on the other end of that is, is if we have needs and we need to meet them and, and we don't have a referendum to do it, we may be put into the position that we have to do something else with funding to make that happen. And if the public understands that, one way or the other, these, some of these things or all these things need to be done. And if they don't do it by referendum, we'll be forced into finding other ways to meet those needs, and that may end up being a lease levy. As much as we don't like to do it that way, we don't think it's the best economic way to do it. If that's the only option we have, we as a board have to work with what we have to meet the needs of our educational system. And that might mean you don't do a bigger project, but it also might mean that you use lease levy, which isn't the best option. So I think if they're faced with options and they say, well, if we don't do it this way, then we'll be forced into doing it some other way, then we might find people saying, well, I'd rather pay for it this way than that way. And then that would be part of the discussion that everybody would be having on how they wanna vote and how they wanna see things move forward.
In your past referendums, you didn't have the tax credit at first to start with. Was that correct?
Not at that level.
And it was at forty percent the first go around, and then it went to what, sixty or fifty? Now it's seventy?
Fifty and then sixty and then, I don't know, it's moved.
This is just for egg land, though, right?
Correct, correct.
Normal business, the normal household, it doesn't affect, so...
When we, when the first referendum was, was it a zero egg-to-school credit? And we were promising this was gonna come and gonna come, right?
I, I take it, I take it was at forty percent.
We had five failed referendums in six years.
First one was zero?
Yeah, it was zero. Yeah, we had five failed referendums over six years. And that first one with the high school, that wasn't even existence. I think the next year is when the legislators passed that, and it started out at forty percent. And then incrementally now is up to seventy percent, so...
So do we have any bonds that are falling off the pay schedule, the debt schedule now?
No. Well, we may have building bonds that are falling off, but we've stared them so that the payments stay level. So then we just increase payments on the...
Well, as of, the elementary ends two thousand twenty-four, I think it is. But overall, payment schedule remains the same.
So you guys didn't bring any tax impact payments for this go around, or?
No, and yet again, it...
I'm sorry to be long-winded.
Well, and as Chris mentioned, we've got a total on that last page, but it really is intended to be an inventory of needs that have been identified. And so we can start to come back with tax impact options based on, like, the administration requests from three to twelve, and we can give you some other options. I think tonight's discussion has given us some good feedback to...
And, and again, remember that this, along with the other projects, were things that came out of the work session last summer. And now you have the information. I'm gonna be pushing you, what do you wanna do? And it might be nothing at this point, but there are certain things that you need to identify as priority. And if the high school addition is priority, what's second, what's third? So that administratively, we know what you want us working on.
Didn't we agree at that work session this was number one priority?
That was pretty much the theme, but there's also other items. And again, if this is the only one you wanna get done, great. That's what we'll focus on.
I think we need to invest in our education. We have the staff. Let's help the staff and get our grade scores hired.
Does everyone else support looking at the twelve classroom idea? It can't just be me, obviously.
Well, I think we need to look at avenues. I think you need to look at the cost, look at the different, compare them, see if you think it's passable or not. You gotta have a number we think we can pass since out to the public. If it's too high, you're not gonna pass it. Need it or not, it's, 'cause too high, it's tough to pass.
And, and I think on top of that, we have to maybe take a look at projections. You know, are we talking about eight classes, for example, getting us ten years or fifteen years or whatever down the road? Or are we talking about getting us four or five years down the road? So I mean, that, that becomes a factor on, do you do twelve or do you do, you know, eight or, you know, some, or maybe ten or whatever the number might be? But I mean, there's some, there's some investigation we need to do and some estimating we need to do and looking into the future as best we can to see what we have to work with.
It sounds like we're already eight classrooms short in terms of the teachers that we, that are hired already, 'cause there, it sounds like there's at least eight teachers on carts. So I think unless that's inaccurate, I, I would support looking into twelve classrooms.
Well, is it really gonna cost? Because when you look at eight classrooms, it's four point four million, add another four, which shouldn't that roughly be another two point two million dollars we'd roughly be looking at on this?
Yes, and another hybrid that I think might come out of tonight's feedback as well. And we'll run through and look at the capacity numbers that you're all going to projections as well as man, that's being a hybrid we bring to, that's ten. And personal opinion, I believe you've got to figure out science. And so maybe it's ten core classrooms and making sure we figure out science in some of the capacity.
And Pat, would the core, like the cafeteria, kitchen, that stuff, would support eight, ten classrooms? We'd have enough space then for twelve classrooms? I mean, in the future, you would make those core spaces inside that big enough to accommodate this?
So the biggest challenge with kitchen, and your principal mentioned it, there, you technically have a servery and a kitchen in this space. I too am amazed that they're able to do what they're able to do. This gives you a working kitchen for a building of this size and a servery for a building of this size, whether you get eight classrooms initially or you add another eight in the future. At a certain point, kitchen being right-sized will be able to serve a building more efficiently. Also, the other thing is that you can maybe reduce your lunch periods if you have that extra space, which I know has been brought up as a concern as we've worked through this a little bit.
Thank you.
So we've talked about building expense now. Now we guys talk about working on Pat for negotiations for prices, for his consulting fees?
What did we put into the last referendum? Five million, right?
Correct, but we came in so low on that, we didn't have to use that, that total.
Yeah, what did we roll that to that time?
I think it was about, well, it might've been about a million that I think we used out of that.
From your assigned.
I think we used...
Was it two and...
Two or three, probably.
Two and a half, then? We didn't use the total amount because bids came in substantially lower. I think the bids came in about four million under what was projected.
So do we need to do action tonight or just discussion or...
No, no, there, this was not planned for action. It was, you asked for the information. This was to update you. That you now have all the information on those identified projects that are also on our action plan. And with that, then, I think, obviously, the high school, we understand, is now the priority one. It's a matter of if there's any others you wanna try and deal with. And again, if you don't, that's fine, but at least this gives us the direction on this one and helps Pat and Chris understand what we need to look at.
Okay, any further questions? I think we're at a point where we can, we've asked a lot of questions. I think there, you know, surely we gotta have a work session down the road to get more input and more thoughts and...
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah. And thank you, Pat and Chris, for presenting. And we will look forward to more information as it comes. Okay, moving on to five point three, approved resolution directing the reallocation of general education revenue.
So this is an annual resolution that redirects dollars to cover the listed items, whether it's district operations, publications, health services, and so on. It's the annual resolution that we do.
I'll move for approval of the resolution.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Thinking about Matt. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Shutey. Aye. Mr. Prins.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
The motion carries. Five point four, approved resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for possible reductions.
Again, this is an annual resolution. It's in the process of potentially doing reductions. It's the first step in that process. So it's an annual resolution that we do. Doesn't mean there will be reductions.
Move to approve, Woodboom. Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley. Aye. Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Shutey. Aye. Mr. Prins.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five point five, approved twenty, twenty twenty-four legislative priorities.
These legislative priorities were presented to the operations committee, and they are recommending approval. I would highlight that we did drop off one of the last year's items, and I did do a little adjusting based on what the legislature may have approved in a few areas. And then also I added number seven, which came out of, well, from Mr. Woodboom's relationship to the letter from the folder of teachers asking the, the education committee members to spend the day in the classroom. So their recommendation was approving the priorities.
Okay, need a motion?
So move, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. To approve the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. Any further discussion? All those in favor, second probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point six, consideration approval of twenty-three levy payable in twenty-four.
So this was presented at the truth in taxation, as well as you've seen it previously. The maximum levy you would be approving is eight million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
I move approval of the twenty twenty-three levy payable in twenty-four.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any discussion?
So it was like a thirteen percent increase, right, that would have amounted to?
On the levy sheet, it shows eleven point six six percent.
This is set, this is the one we're setting then, or is this...
Yes.
Just setting the maximum with consideration later, or this is...
No, this is the number you set. Yep.
So that's with credits, the...
Yeah.
And the last time we had vibe, it was what, eight point two million? 'Cause last year was seven point nine?
Yes. Last year's was seven point nine one one.
When, when I asked the last time we under levy, do we under levy by what, five hundred thousand? But what was the reason you didn't wanna do that very often? Because it's a formula set by the state, correct?
Yep. And I, I would tell you, if you were looking to under levy, we should've done that, had those discussions over a month ago.
Also, I think we found in the past by under levying, you know, you take that money out at one point, but then we always play catch-up, try to put it back in later on and, and make that area up. And then we turn around with all kinds of programs and needs we have, and then we don't, we have, we're less that much more money to, to meet those needs. And then we end up kind of levying more money or, or come up with the money later on to meet those needs. So like we're looking at now, we have a lot of, you know, we have the, the school project, but we have a lot of other projects that we're talking about, our priorities of ours, too. So I think by not levying now, you're always putting yourself in the hole, 'cause then you, you lost that money, then you gotta try and catch up and make it up and go beyond and make up the difference. So I think we're better off keeping it up year to year than it is to let it fall back and then try to catch up later on. So I think it's a good idea to keep it, keep it up there and not be jumping up and down, up and down with it.
Hey, do we have a motion?
Yep, in a second.
In a second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, second probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five point seven, approved movie licensing renewal.
So we have done, we have had a three-year agreement with, through the service co-op with Swantec Company in regards to movie licensure. This was presented to the instructional committee. This would be for a new three-year licensure so that, example, if a teacher wants to show, show a movie in a classroom, we're not caught by copyright rules. So the total renewal charge, it got changed. I don't have the updated form. Do you have that updated form, Lisa? We had to add the intermediate school and switch the West Learning Center to the Learning Center community end building. Pretty sure I gave it to you, but... I think it was about a little over five thousand dollars. Yeah, fifty-eight, eleven.
So it went up then with the changes and?
It went up some, yeah, from the changes. Well, we actually added a building, so.
I move approval of a movie licensing renewal.
Second.
Motion by Adam, second by Tom, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion? All those in favor, second probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approved 24, 25 school calendar, and the 24, 25 VIB calendar, and the 24 preschool calendar.
So I'll try and run through these quick. I actually were sent an option B1 and B2. Option B is what the instructional committee recommended, but after that, I had some staff input and I went and gave you two options. The biggest, really the biggest change between the two is whether there's the spring break around Easter or the spring break the last week in March. And the rationale behind the feedback to move it to March was in relationship to testing. It gets it prior to the testing season, where in April, you're kind of in the mid-testing season. Testing starts in April. So that was the rationale behind it of why the change and having two options. Plus, option B2 has a week-long spring break, whereas in option B1, there's four days off of school, but it covers a weekend. So that's that one. The preschool basically is based on the same philosophy. Preschools run a little different schedule than the regular calendar schedule because they work longer days, so there's some adjustments and some different training time. But it really focus, B1 is where the days off are around Easter or the end of March. So those are the big changes there. And then the VIB calendar is just one option, the one that was sent to you, and that's different than our typical other calendar. So.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the three different calendars for the district.
Which format?
The VIB calendar and the regular school calendar.
Yeah, but B1 or B2?
The one moving it to the Easter break. So it's moving it from April to March. Is that what you?
That's B2.
That's B2, okay.
B2, okay.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Lori, second by Tom, to approve the three calendars. It's called B2.
Yeah.
That's come out of instructional committee recommendation? Okay.
And that's in line with staff recommendation and taking into consideration testing, right?
Yeah, that's where I got the feedback of moving the spring break and moving it out of the testing season.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, second probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, approve a work-based learning program.
Long and short, we've run a work-based learning program. It kind of dropped off, but there was still some components. So it's always really been there. We want to revive it and redo that, and the instructional committee is recommending approval.
I make the motion to approve the work-based learning program.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the work-based learning program. Any discussion? All those in favor, second probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.10, approve first reading of policy 606.
So in policy 606, I actually sent you this morning a revised copy of that. We had a committee meeting yesterday after school, and in there, we made a few adjustments with that committee, and they were the committee that was looking at the policy previously. So what it came up to is in section five on page two D, you will see only appendix G referenced there. And that was a minor change from what it was. It just removed reference E. And then if you go to the actual makeup of the district committee, if I can find it here, I think it was on page seven.
606, seven.
Number six on the bottom was changed to one support staff or a high school student council representative. So that was that one. And then the last, what I call change, was the removal of reference E, which was an expectation guidance sheet. And the conversation related to there was that we would look to address that in the employee handbooks. And that's where that came from. So that were the changes on there. The committee actually originally recommended putting it in policy 606 versus having a policy 606.1. And of course, that would be option two or option three, which I presented to the instructional committee, is you just reaffirm that this is an administrative supervisory responsibility and part of our authority to do that. So those are your three options. Based on all the input and wherever, I would tell you, I would recommend policy 606 as it's been revised now, and let's move on.
Okay, any new motion first?
I'll make the motion so we can have some discussion around this. So I approve the first reading of policy 606 with the changes that were made and handed out to you today.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Adam. Okay. Discussion time. Just went through a committee process.
Right, so an advisory committee has been set up, and they've been working on this probably a month and a half now, two months. And the first, they suggested that 606.1, to remove that and just make changes to 606. And as Superintendent Landgard has explained the process and where we are right now, we'll have first reading now. We also will have to have a second reading at some point, so there is some time in between here to tweak more if we need to, or go back to the committee, the advisory committee. So that's why I recommend the first reading, knowing that there may be some more tweaking as we move it forward. But I just do want to thank the committee. Most of them are there, are here tonight for their time to look at 606.1, 606, and to look at what the changes could be and their recommendations, too.
Okay, any further discussion?
So if we approve the first reading, there's no more tweaking? This is going to be?
Well, there can be, but.
Well, it's got to be done through amendments or motions, or you just can't change the reading for, from this month to next month?
So the way it is, is we can go back and make some further adjustments, and we, example, if we took item B out or one of the items out, we just acknowledge it as a change and go for approval at that point. And that's the way we've always done it, so.
So the second reading would be then effective?
Correct.
With the changes, if?
With the new changes. If there are any changes.
You don't have to go through two more readings.
No, just one.
Mr. Landgard, what would you say are the most like meaningful changes between existing policy 606 and this proposed new policy 606?
Well, the general three pages of the policy itself. The changes related to adding section 5D, and then the other changes where I had superintendent or designee as a change, that's kind of what we've been doing to our policies. So the actual three-page policy in itself, those were the changes. As far as the process and procedure, there were some changes in the process and procedure, because the original process procedure example, you would have to designate, these are committee members, and half would go off every year, and it was that continual rotation. And I can tell you, you never remember to do that as a board, or even me, bringing it back. It never works that way. So there were changes in the step and process, and shortening a few of the timelines, as well as that committee structure. So that probably is more of a major change in the process. It doesn't change really the process itself in general, but it just, it tightened up timelines and how things function.
And was that change something that was discussed in the review committee?
Not when I was there. It was brought up slightly the other day, but we didn't spend a lot of time with it, so.
Were there any recommendations made by the review committee that are not reflected in this newest draft policy?
The only one I can think of is on appendix G, they wanted to remove the one line. And again, that was the last line, and I'm going to tell you, at some point, somebody has to make the decision, and it's generally administrators, and that's how I feel pretty strongly about that one, so.
So overall, the current existing 606 policy is 25 pages long in its entirety, and the proposed policy is 24 pages long. So you've added appendix G to that new policy, which is one page. So what was cut from the existing?
It might have been how it just got formatted, because I did adjust the formatting in there, and it might have been part of adjusting the processes or procedures in there. So then it's the formatting element.
So I, I appreciate the time and energy that everyone has spent on this topic. It's important to get it right. And I've been able to spend some limited time reviewing the proposed policy 606. And, I mean, we've gotten that just this, just this morning. And I don't expect everyone to have read all 49 pages of, you know, the existing policy and the new policy and compare the policies line by line. But that's what I did, because it's important to understand how proposed policy 606 compares to the existing 606 policy. So I, what I've done is I've, I've printed the version that we received this morning, which is this, I think, the same version that Mr. Landgard handed out. But I highlighted in yellow what is different in the new policy than in the existing policy, just so that it's easier to understand what, what has changed. And there's one page here as well, you know, because it's only like a three-page document, but then there are appendices, and then there are reference documents. So I created a little table of contents that shows what's in the existing policy and what's in the proposed policy. And then down on the second half of the page, I've created a flow chart for how objectional materials are addressed under the existing policy and how they would be addressed under the new policy. So I've printed enough for each board member and Mr. Landgard and Mr. Noble. So if you want to come get yours, Mr. Noble. And hopefully that's helpful. You know, before I get into the weeds on sharing you what I learned, and I'm going to share, here, here are my takeaways from this, from the new version of the proposed policy. So number one, proposed policy 606 is poorly written and convoluted in several places. It needs significant revisions before it is a document deserving of an A grade, which should not be too high of an expectation of ISD 518 administration. Number two, when it comes to addressing objectional material, proposed policy 606 gives the superintendent unrestrained authority to make whatever decision he wants, however he wants. Proposed policy 606 gives the superintendent more control than the existing 606 policy does by removing the current role of the building committee, district committee, and the school board to provide guidance and transfers authority to the superintendent. I do not believe the superintendent's authority should be increased, especially if Mr. Landgard's order of flag removal serves as a model for how objectionable materials would be handled under the current policy. Number three, proposed policy 606 does not offer any decision-making framework for administrators to use when evaluating unobjectionable material. And I thought that's what policy 606 was going to be revised to begin with. Because I'm not part of any of the committees that tackle this topic in between school board meetings, this is my first and only time to share my thoughts and provide input on this policy before it is voted on during its first reading. I've tried to summarize and analyze the existing and proposed versions as concisely but thoroughly as possible. So hang in there. Your attentiveness might save you the need of reading 45 pages of riveting policy. So the last sentence on page two, which Mr. Landgard highlighted, is the first change to existing policy 606. This added sentence expands the scope of policy 606 to govern the review of materials that are not curriculum-specific or directly related to academics. While this addition is, is poorly worded, it does the job of encompassing all materials under policy 606. Next, turn to appendix B, which starts on page six of both the existing and the proposed policy documents, but it's one page shorter in the proposed version. So in general, appendix B provides the procedure for administration to use when dealing with an objection to a resource. And this is where I think we, as a board, need to have a firm understanding of what happens when an objection to a material is made. So feel free to follow along with a graph on this handout, because that's the, this flow chart comes out of appendix B. Here's where both existing and proposed appendix Bs are the same. The person who receives a complaint should try to resolve the issue with the objector, and if honest successful, direct the complaint to the building principal. The building principal shall explain to the objector the purpose and rationale behind the resource. If the object, and by resource, they mean like the material or the issue. If the objector still wishes for the removal or restriction of the resource, the objector shall submit a request for reevaluation of a resource, which is a specific form, to the building principal. Next is where the new proposed policy deviates from the existing policy. So let's focus first on understanding the existing policy. Existing policy states that upon receiving one of these objection forms, the principal shall refer it to the building committee for reevaluation of the resource. This building level committee is one of two committees that the existing policy says shall be formed. The building level committee then considers the questioned resource and decides whether the resource remains or is removed. If the objector is not satisfied with the building level decision, the objector may submit their objection to a separate district level committee for reevaluation of a resource. That existing policy goes on to provide instructions on who comprises the district level reevaluation committee and who provides guidelines to the reevaluation committee. The district level revaluation committee's decision then may be appealed to the school board. So that's existing 606 policy. Here is what is different in the new proposed 606 policy. Here is what is different in the new proposed 606 policy. Look at page seven of the proposed policy, paragraph nine. Rather than directing the principal to refer all objection forms to the building-level committee for reevaluation of a resource, the new policy states that the principal or designee may utilize a building committee for reevaluation of the resource or make a decision based on the information available. And if the objector is not satisfied with the decision, the objector may submit their objection to the superintendent or designee. This new proposed policy effectively strips away two levels of committee review and sends the issue directly through the building principal to the superintendent. In peculiar fashion, the next two and a half pages of the proposed policy describes the composition of a committee for reevaluation of resources. This new proposed policy includes the same checklist as the existing policy for the reevaluation committee to use. However, the new policy does not provide an avenue for an objection to ever be sent to a reevaluation committee at the district level. Instead, the building principal and superintendent or their designee are given the authority to decide these issues all by themselves with no decision-making framework or restrictions on their authority. Since there's no channel for a reevaluation committee to ever play a part in this process, there's no reason these lengthy sections still should be included in the proposed policy 606. Moving on to Appendix G. Appendix G is a brand-new section of proposed policy 606. This section entitled "Controversial Issues" explains when controversial issues may be discussed in the classroom. The last line of Appendix G, which Mr. Landgard mentioned has been controversial, no pun intended, is the superintendent designation, or designee, will have the authority to judge whether the above conditions are met. So, in summary, I have two main concerns with the proposed edits to policy 606. First, the proposed policy gives the superintendent complete authority to determine what is and is not allowed in schools. There is no role for a building-level or district-level review committee to ensure that some checks and balances are in place when evaluating appropriate resources and materials in our district. This new proposed policy, as it is written, does not even provide a pathway for an objection to be appealed to the school board. Second, the policy does not give decision-makers any parameters or a decision-making framework, such as the Tinker Test, in which to evaluate an objection to an issue. I believe this was the reason we took up the task of revisiting policy 606 in the first place, and we're not accomplishing this goal with the current proposal. While I don't disagree with the idea of revisiting or revising the existing 606 policy, I'm not comfortable moving forward with the policy 606 as it is proposed. Nor am I comfortable with the other two options presented by Mr. Landgard, because all three options serve up the same thing. Unfettered authority for one person to potentially limit the constitutional rights of staff and students. So, I guess I would like to make a motion to table the first reading of policy 606 textbooks and instructional materials until it can undergo further revisions. And to also table Mr. Landgard's request to reaffirm administrative supervisory authority.
Second.
Already got a motion made and seconded.
Got a motion on the floor first.
They can't just go make a motion.
A rule that motion, and we have to vote on the motion to table first.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt policy 606.
The first reading.
The first reading.
But when you have a motion to table, that takes precedent, and you vote on that first. And if that doesn't, if that passes, then we, it's tabled to some future date. If it doesn't, then we move on with the motion at hand.
Isn't 606 already tabled?
No, we have a motion right now to approve the first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
So, at this point, we're dealing with a motion to table.
Yeah, but last month, did we table 606 already?
But we're not tabled it right now, because we're having discussion on it. It's no longer tabled at this point.
I think you're thinking of 606.1.
Okay.
Which was tabled from two months ago, two months ago.
So, Mr. Chairman, a discussion on the table in motion? Is that the next item?
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what's your suggestions on the next step in the shooting?
I think Appendix B needs to be revised so that there are channels in which committees can weigh in on these issues once an objection is presented to the administration.
And we did have staff and administration represented on helping shape this.
And that's why I asked if the change to the process was discussed during the review committee. And Mr. Landgard's response was that it was discussed very briefly, but not in depth.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, ask Mr. Noble, you were involved in those discussions. Your thoughts on how the discussions went regarding Ms. Shutey's concerns?
The question that that committee continued to ask is, at what point would a committee not be necessary? I think there's danger as well in when a material comes up where an administrator potentially has to make a decision. When do I bring others in? I had looked out in this scenario, and looked at what the administration thinks would have brought others in, and then had further conversation. Obviously, in hindsight, it's a lot different to look backwards now. But even some of the teachers in that review committee, to get that conversation around, there will be times when a committee clearly is not necessary. So, I hear what you're saying. We don't want to make a policy or a procedure within that policy where that maybe just gets skipped. Where we see words like "may" and "shall," we're looking at legal documents. I understand we've been over trust. And right now, people are worried about that. But I don't want to make a procedure where it's any time something's questioned and it's an absolute must, and we're going to bring committees together.
Yeah, I mean, "may's" and "shall's" are important. And under the existing 606 policy, which applies to curriculum matters, it's an issue with the objector and the principal initially. And only if the objector continues to object above the principal, would it be directed to a building-level committee. And if the objector keeps pushing it, then it would go to a district-level committee. So, you know, it really would take an assertive objector before it would even reach the building-level committee. But that building-level committee would be in place as the next step above the principal. I think when you get a group of people's minds together, you're going to be able to examine an issue from a broader perspective than any one person. So, if there's an issue that's getting to that level, I think it's appropriate for it to be addressed by a committee.
Chairman. So, is there going to be another meeting with the review committee after the first reading? Then why do we need to table this? If you feel strongly about this, Erin, then go, Heather View Committee, have you come to our meeting and make the changes for the second reading? And we can make that change then. If you feel strongly about this, I don't want to table it.
Yeah, I do feel strongly about it. And I'm not going to vote on the first reading of a document that I wouldn't be comfortable voting on a second time. And I've expressed my opinions in former board meetings. I've expressed my opinions via emails. And everyone has opinions. So, I'm not saying that my opinions have to be included. But I feel like this is the only channel I have for my opinions truly to be like addressed and heard. So, that's what I'm doing tonight. And I think there is enough substantial changes that need to be made to this policy, addressing the process flow, that really those should be addressed before we do, before we vote on a first reading. Ideally, a first reading would be a document that we're comfortable passing and wouldn't need to be changed between that time and the second reading. So, like, let's do like a work and put together a document that we don't think needs to be changed between now and next month.
So, what do we need to do to have Erin's plan in place? Do we need to, so we got to vote on the table motion? Or the motion to approve the first reading?
The first thing you vote on is the table motion. That takes precedent. You can have all the discussion you want now, but your motion is to table. So, we should vote on the motion to table or to move forward? Or to not table, and then we'll move forward with the motion that would be to approve the?
First reading.
Yeah, first reading.
What we need to do is fail the table motion and then fail the reading of the first reading? And then go back to the drawing board and start over again?
Table pass, as you're tableing them.
Yeah, the table's passed, and then we, there's no more action at that point.
What's that?
Then the first motion is basically?
On hold.
On hold.
Yeah, but if we go through and table it, because we don't want to table, do we? Because we want to keep working on it?
The motion is to table, it means we're not going to vote on it, the motion.
Okay.
But I'm confident that changes could be made between now and January's board meeting, where we could vote on a quality comprehensive draft that wouldn't need changes between January and February. In February, it could be voted on and done with.
But that's making an assumption that the majority of the board is going to agree with those changes. And then we'd be prolonging it again if they don't agree. And we got to tweak it again, and it goes on and on. I think by voting on a draft at this point keeps the ball moving, puts more ominous on getting something that's acceptable to everybody in front of the board instead of going, saying, "We want this," and then they say, "No, we don't want that." And then we want something in the middle. I think by taking action, we put the ominous on getting into that middle right away from moving forward. Doesn't mean necessarily that we can't forego the second reading if it comes out, if we don't have everything put together at that point. But at least gets the ball going. Personally, you know, we can have, we could add two more committees on here, too, and just keep the appeals process going. Every time someone doesn't like what happens, we can have another appeal process, and somebody can appeal it again and again and again. Ultimately, there's some decisions, I think, that have to be made on, at the time. And it shouldn't go to a committee. The superintendent should have the authority. That's what we hire him for, to manage. The building principals should be able to make certain decisions that we don't want to wait for everything to go to a committee. There might be some action that's being taken by a student or staff or someone that needs to have immediate action to remedy the problem. And at that point, stuff, we need to resolve it at that point. And I don't think, some of those decisions, and there shouldn't be a lot of them, but if they come up, somebody has to have the authority to make a decision, say, "We're going to do it." We're not just going to say, "We don't want you to do it, but we're going to take it to committee now, and then we're going to go to this now, and we're going to go to that." That's kind of how we got in this situation to begin with and stuff. We don't like to talk about controversial issues, but this is a controversial issue. And we're spending a lot of time addressing it. And I think in some cases and stuff, we needed to clarify. And that's what I think I heard when this all got going. We don't have the authority to do this. Well, now, we're trying to clarify that, yes, we do have the authority to do something. And we're trying to clarify how we're going to use that authority. We don't want to abuse, and I don't think the administrators want to abuse it either. So, it's a matter of, you know, we want to move forward. We want to clarify that the administration does have the authority. And hopefully, not hopefully, but we expect them to use it within a reasonable timeframe. And we want to have certain areas that are appropriate, to have committee discussions and have more people weighing in on it. But I think to some extent, we need to have that guidance by the administrators, the people to say, "Hey, kid, when's the appropriate time?" I think we're trying to get to the same goals as a group. It's just a question, how long do we want to do it and drag it out? And I think by eliminating another committee would certainly help get us into that direction. I think having it as, if we think it's that important, we should look at it further. Then maybe we should have the ability to have another group or committee come in and look at that. But that would be at the discretion, if it's that important or that kind of an issue where we need to do that. So, you know, I think we want to, it should be one of the things, I think, we heard is we should streamline it. We should try to keep these policies as simple as possible, not add more pages to them if we can. If we could take something out, that might be good. If we need to add something in, that may be good also. I guess, I'm really not sure, quite frankly, when we were sitting here talking, I wasn't quite sure how often we've used this policy. How often have we had these committees come together? How often have we had to make use of this policy at all? I don't ever remember hearing us ever using this policy. And now, we're really worked up about, I mean, everybody's worked up about using, having a policy well-written that we used once, that I'm aware of in my 20-some years on the school board. It's good to have a good policy, but I think maybe we're trying to overthink this a little bit too much.
Well, if we are going...
If the process flow, if we move forward with the proposed process flow, then we can eliminate about eight pages of the proposed policy that mention the composition of the district-level committee and the checklist and review forms that the district committee would use. Because that, there is no purpose for that committee. There's never going to be an objection that gets to such a committee. So, that's an example of like excess and irrelevant information in the policy if there's not going to be a district-level committee.
And that's why I think maybe, you know, as mentioned, you know, to put something more in play to explain. Because I was under the impression you wanted that committee back in place. Now, it sounds like you'd rather not have that language in there at all. So, it'd be nice to maybe have a clearer document that would explain maybe what would be in and what would be out. I do think that ultimately, if we hire a superintendent, we have building administrators, and that's part of their job. We set policy, then they implement. And when everything falls apart, it comes back to the school board to make the final decision. And I don't think by not listing us as a school board in here necessarily negates the fact that the school board can step in and take action whenever they feel like it. I don't think you have to have us on a flow chart for us to figure out that we have the authority to make the decisions if we so desire. And I think somebody earlier on had mentioned that, "Does the school board want to be dealing with all of these little issues and problems and all this stuff that would come through?" And the answer is, "No, we don't." That's why we have administrators to deal with it. But when it comes time for us to deal with it, then it comes to us. And it doesn't have to be on a flow chart for it to end up here. So, I don't have any problem with us not being listed on a flow chart, saying that it comes to us. Because ultimately, if it's a big enough problem, it will come to us.
Laurie?
I just have a quick question for Mr. Landgard. When we made the changes, the tweaks, I'm calling them, to 606, they were sent to our lawyer, our district lawyer, to look at that. Did that lawyer look at the entire policy? Or just the things that we changed?
Yep.
In 606?
Yep.
And that came back?
And again, he looked at the things that were changed. So, Reference E, Appendix G, the policy itself. I don't know if he didn't have any changes. I don't, I told him about the process procedure, but I don't know if he looked at it. He didn't have any changes identified there.
And then my second question is if, does a second reading have to be one month? Does it have to be in January? Can it be in February?
Could be.
Could be. So, it doesn't necessarily have to. Okay, all right.
There's not a time limit on it, right?
So, if we pass the first reading, or change is going to be made that Erin suggests, or how are we going to do it? I don't feel comfortable passing a reading and just giving it, do what you want to do with it?
I think you have to let the review committee do that. That's what we got them for. They're going to meet again.
It needs to go back.
And they need to bring Erin in. And they have to all agree that they want to bring these changes to the second reading. And if they don't, that's up to the committee. That's how I feel. I'm ready to pass it, keep the ball rolling. I don't want to table this no more. I agree, I don't disagree with you, Erin. I appreciate what you've brought here. I'm ready to get the first reading done. And then the review committee, bring Erin in, however they want to do it. Let them do these changes if they feel they need to be done.
I am going to bring up one concern, as if you are going to have...
I am going to bring up one concern as if you are going to have the district governed by a committee versus administration. Because we have committees everywhere and if you're saying we're going to start to be governed by committee, then I question why we have administrators.
Because the administrators are like you're, John, you, you're in charge of your administrators in all the buildings. You have to answer the board. We are your boss. You're not our boss.
Not saying I am.
So I think we need to have some control ourselves on some issues that are important. And I will not be voting for the policy, for the approval for policy one or the six oh six tonight because it's just, it's too vague. It's like signing a checkbook, check blank and telling you to go spend money. We need to go back, review it and come back with the right one instead of keep making changes and changes and changes.
So the review committee, we had changes they made, was a waste of time then? Is that what we're saying?
I call for a question. Let's vote on the issue and move on. As we're going to sit here all night talking about this? I think we all got our opinions, how we feel.
Well, the motion on the floor is to table it, so we need, that's not a discussion item, so we will vote to, the motion is to table, so we will vote on to table it or not to, so. We have a motion and a second to table?
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor to table the motion, signify by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That was ayes.
We should have had a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley?
Can we re-vote after we voted once? Can we call, recall? We can call a roll call vote, can't we?
I'm.
This is just to verify the votes that we had.
No, you were no, right?
I was a no, yeah.
We're going to verify the votes that we had, so no? No?
We got to clarify this. We get confusion.
Well, yeah.
Do a show of hands.
Show of hands, show of hands.
For affirming it or just?
For tabling it or not tabling it, right?
Those in favor of tabling, raise your hand.
Right.
And those who are opposed.
Okay, ta, the motion to table fails. Okay, now we're back to the reg, regular motion. The six oh six policy, which was made before. Motion was made to adopt six oh six.
First reading and there was a second, Tom, was a second.
So we're back to the main motion now, so. So any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, we just can't leave, lose sight of the fact that we're not all going to agree on the policy. And that we have, I mean, I put my trust and belief in the administration and the staff that were called together to vet through this process. We hosted a listening session. I think that a lot of due diligence was done to, to hear the concerns and that any policy isn't any good unless it's enforceable, if it's actionable, if you actually have a, a plan to utilize it. If you look at the amount of policies that we have, that I don't know if all of our staff members have fully read them from top to bottom. And this is, what are we gaining by adding another layer of policy is another item to keep in mind? I know we're striving to get it right, but ultimately, how is this impacting the kids that are sitting in the classrooms of our district? And that is the, the ultimate goal of this entire discussion.
So the motion on the table is to adopt the first reading of policy six oh six. And that doesn't mean it can't be changed for the next reading. I mean, some changes. So that is still on the table, but that is still possible. But I think we're trying to move it forward and it doesn't have to be in January, it could be two months down the road to get it ironed out, but I think, I think the goal of us is trying to get it to move forward so keep it rolling, so.
And I would just like to see that our district lawyer looks at it in its entirety and if there's changes that those could also be brought back to the advisory committee, because I'm sure we're going to meet again to go over the, any changes that we wanted to make. And that was from the get-go, we were going to come back with revisions. But I'd certainly like to see the whole policy reviewed by our district attorney.
And the second reading is when it's in effect, so. By voting for it now doesn't mean there can't be changes made, Tom, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. So any further discussion? All those in favor to adopt the first reading of policy six oh six, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to five point eleven, approved two student teaching agreements.
So we have a couple of student teaching agreements. I have the one here from Grand Canyon University and Dave, I don't remember the other one.
Saint Benedict's and Saint God's.
Okay. So those would be the two we're approving. We talked about one of them at the instructional committee. We didn't have the other one and I've gotten that sent, so. We talked about the Saint Benedict one at the instructional and now we have the Grand Canyon University one as well.
Okay. Need a motion?
Yeah, I'm of approval of the two student teaching agreements.
Motion by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point twelve, approved concession stand credit card acceptance.
This was presented to the instructional committee in regards to utilization of a credit card process for transactions at the concession stands and a lot of people have been asking for it. Actually, Mrs. Trow received a grant to buy the equipment to do that, so it's really at this point approving and accepting that.
They need a motion?
We make a motion for the concession stand credit card acceptance.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point one thirteen, approved medical leave for absence of foreign employee.
Yes, we have a request for a twelve week, for a medical leave from January third through March first and it was presented to the operations committee and recommend for approval.
So move. Steve?
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point fourteen, approved accept middle school parking lot bid.
Uh, we took bids for the remaining portion of the middle school parking lot reconstruction. We did it in a, a base bid for the north main parking lot and then we had an alternate for the front of the building, the entrance and right in front of the building. We received four bids, which was good. The low bid was from Henning Construction. The base bid was seven hundred and six thousand seventeen dollars and fifty cents and their alternate bid was two hundred and ninety-two thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. Our recommendation at this point is to accept both the base and the alternate bid for a total of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And both of these bids were about 10% lower than the engineer's estimate. Our, our thought is that if we leave the alternate and come back next year, the mobilization and all of the extra costs are going to push that bid up. We have long-term facility maintenance funds to take care of this and this would take care of our parking lots for a while and we'll shift our attention to some roofing projects after that. That's our recommendation. Announced, was presented to the operations committee as well.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the base bid and the alternate bid with the wording to Henning Construction.
Second by Tom. Motion by Steve, second by Tom to approve the bid as presented. Any further discussion? Steve?
Yes, the operations committee did also recommend that we approve this bid and the alternate. Also, this is, it is our plan to do this. We're going to stage it in, in pieces, so it's not that this wasn't going to get done, it's just we're going to do it a year later and it's just going to cost us a lot more to wait and do it. So that's why we recommended that we do it at this point. We're going to save a lot of money by, by doing it at one time. The money's there and it is planned to be done. There's no reason to wait for another year and raise our costs to do it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point fifteen, ice arena discussion.
So at the last special meeting of the three public entities, it was, the direction was set to come back to, as a group and talk about where you want to be and if you want to be involved and potentially what might be the commitment related to that. And so this is the last main agenda item for you to talk about tonight. I did send out some additional information to you from Mr. Millbrant, who was at the table and part of that conversation and relationship to a study that was done as well as some of the, shares the economic impact that they had in the study. So with that, I guess as a board, you need to figure out where you'd like to be with the ice arena conversation and potential commitment.
Mr. Chairman, what was the discussion like at the operational committee? Was that, was this?
We just had to keep talking about it.
We felt it was worth having discussion and, and trying to keep the project moving forward. The amount that the county was willing to donate, at least, you know, the way they had talked, it wasn't going to be a lot if they did. And, and the amount that they were being, you know, you know, suggested and stuff wasn't a huge percentage of it. We felt that perhaps the project scaling or, or the added cost could be made up in some other ways, you know, either, either other entities picking up the added cost or scaling the project a little bit different to keep that moving forward. In light of the information that was provided here just recently in regard to the economic impact to the community, I think it's, people don't really realize how much money is brought into a community on these types of programs, whether it be the fair or whether it be a hockey association tournaments or gymnastics tournaments and things like this, that the people coming into the community and stuff, what that does for a community. I don't think we're, should be ready quite yet to, to walk away from this. I think it's a program that we should do whatever we can to keep it operational and, and make those facilities available to the community and do the best we can to keep as many options open to our community and our kids to have options. So, so I think that's why we want to keep it moving forward and, and do our best to make it work, not to make it fail.
Does the city have a special meeting tomorrow night on this?
Yeah, they have a special, they have a special council meeting where they're going to have, they have that on the agenda for discussion. This, this, if I remember right, the county board already did take action on it.
So do we have any idea where the city is falling in and what they want to do? So we have an idea? Are they?
We have another meeting scheduled, don't we?
Um, yes.
Twenty-fifth of January.
Twenty-fifth of January is when we would get back with the city to get what their commitment might be and where they want to be. Ultimately, most ice facilities are owned by cities. There are a few owned by school districts and there are, are a smaller number owned by private or clubs, which is probably only, very few and you probably got six to eight that are school-owned at the most.
My understanding is the county is no?
The county voted no, yes. They chose not to be a part of it, which I, I don't know their rationale. I don't know why. You'd have to ask them.
The, the, I'd have the down January twenty-fifth at six o'clock PM as the.
Right.
Next meeting to discuss that as a joint meeting.
And the county will not be attending that then?
More than likely, I'm guessing they won't show up. Which would be unfortunate.
It's going to be a city and school district.
And other donations.
And other people.
Hockey association, others that are interested in helping fund it, but.
So the intent tonight was just to gauge the board's interest in continuing or are you looking for a, a dollar discussion?
I don't think there's any commitment, but again, do you want to be part of the discussion or don't? Because there's plenty of other things to deal with.
I'm absolutely part of the discussion if we're doing a, a gauge on that, so.
I'm a part of the discussion, I just want to know where some of these other commitments come in. And as far as that economic impact went by, by Mr. Millbrath, was that Hermantown? Is that correct where he?
One was Hermantown and one was Watertown. And there's a state commission study too.
My, my concern with that impact is you're talking hockey country and Hermantown, you're only 15 minutes from Duluth. I don't think that's apples to apples for us. I just, I don't, I'm not saying it won't impact us in a positive way, but not likely will for them, that's how I feel.
And, and I think that, from what I read on it, the way I understood it was they, they, they used the same concept and they then tempered it down to fit more Worthington's dynamic, like how many teams we would have coming in and some of that type of, of information. So I don't think they took their information and, and used it. I believe they took the process and then reapplied it to Worthington as best they could. So to just give an idea of, of what the impact was instead of not knowing, they used a known process for trying to calculate that out.
I think that they, they estimated that it could bring, two sheets of ice could bring up to a million dollars in revenue to our region each year. And if you think about that in terms of the half-cent sales tax, then that's $5,000 raised through sales tax in, in our city due to the two-sheet ice arena, which $5,000 is not a lot. But I was having a conversation with Mr. Landgard and he was like, well, there's a lot of like economic development potential there when you get more businesses coming through, more people coming through, there's a potential for like new housing developments. And, and I, I agree with Mr. Landgard on that. There's like, there's, there's potential there. But I think the, the main reason that I would support continuing conversation on this endeavor is because there's, there's rec, this would be another recreational option for our kids. It would also provide sustainability to our hockey program. And I think as a school district, that's what we care about. Like the economic development argument maybe can be what the city hinges their decision-making on. But for us, it's, it's about the kids and it's an opportunity and options for the kids. I think when it comes to finances though, we have to consider whether, whether we can pursue both an ice arena and in addition to the high school. Is that feasible? Is the timing appropriate? And if we have to choose one or the other, I think the high school has to be our priority.
You know, in Weber right now, so you want to talk about hockey, Weber's looking for, what is it, $250,000 of donations to make improvements to the baseball field and they're trying to exclude us from it, but we're looking at spending millions on a hockey arena and they're looking at 250,000. At what point do those organizations say, hey, what about us? Because I, that, I think that will happen. But I'm, I'm for the discussion and not against it. I, I agree. It's a good deal, but I guess I would just like to see the commitments from the city and the hockey association and keep moving forward.
Ultimately, it comes down to what we. Ultimately, it comes down to what we can, we feel committed that we can afford. And then they do the best to make a facility based on those dollars. And that's, that's my approach.
And we got to decide if we're going to do this high school, how many dollars we're going to put into it. Because I feel strongly we need to put into it with our assigned fund balance at seventeen and a half million dollars. But I think that'll help pass a referendum, and I agree with Aaron. Number one priority, it's our high school.
So I think we're going to need the city to step up and see what they're going to do first, and what we're willing to do. And we'll have to make a decision, will we go with them or won't we?
They're going to look at us at this meeting tonight as a lead to what their conversation is going to look like tomorrow.
Like John said, most hockey arenas are owned by the city.
Isn't it like eighty-five percent is owned by the city?
I don't know the exact percentage, but it's high.
I think we can be a partner, but, I think we can be a partner, but not a, but not a big dollar amount.
I just got a question. I mean, it just, I mean, I'm back to who's going to run it, and then where the money's going to come from. And I'm back to what Matt was talking in the last few meetings is, what kind of income? I mean, if we're going to spend ten million dollars, just a ballpark figure, whatever, do we charge for tournaments? Or we don't charge for tournaments? Tournaments are free? Or, I mean, how's it all going to revolve? I mean, I just thinking of questions and.
Another question I have, if the county is not involved, now we're co-opping with all these other area districts. If we're going to continue co-opping with them and other school districts don't have to help pay for this, when can we look at upping our co-opping fees if they want to come be a part of this organization? When it, when the, when that co-op sunsets? Because what is a co-op, two years or three?
Basically, they're every two years, but you can sunset them or end them at any time.
But is that feasible, that if we're going to co-op, that can we set the fees, or how are we setting the fees?
Well, the fees right now are set, and to me, you wouldn't be able to change that, but we set our participation fees. The hockey association sets their own fees, and we're charging high school kids, I think it's sixty dollars right now. So we're not charging a substantial fee. Hockey Association, I believe, as last I heard, was three fifty per kid. And again, that's just part of helping pay their costs that they work. Right now, the city is operating the current facility, and they're doing the maintenance, and I believe, I don't know how the finance side of it's working.
Where do we become involved in this whole hockey program? Is it like seventh grade on up, eighth grade on up?
Seventh grade, generally.
And then?
Well, our team actually is, where we would become involved is what's called BANTOM, and that is the eighth, ninth grade age group. So it's like your JV team. We've never, we've never had enough kids to run a JV team, and that's been a little bit of a problem. So the hockey association does the BANTOM teams, if I'm understanding the hockey set up correctly.
I'm personally in support of continuing this discussion on the ice arena. For the gymnastics association, we put money there. We've got, I remember back in the day when we put money into the tennis courts, and that was a million dollars, and that was a lot of money at that time. And, you know, we have a great gymnastics team. We put a lot of money into that facility. Look at our Trojan Field now, we put a lot of money into that facility. So we certainly continue the discussion on hockey, doing it for the kids, like Aaron said.
And if we're going to do the hockey, do we just cancel all our other sports fields that we're looking at?
No.
Well, that's part of the balancing act. I was thinking the same thing. You know, we've got a lot of things, a lot of needs, and X number of dollars, and we have to try and prioritize which program is, you know, do you have an op, well, one difference to me would be is, do you have a facility to operate in? Or do we have a program that's going to lose? That was the gymnastics program problem. We had a good program, we're running out of, we're losing the facility. Well, we could run the same thing with the hockey association. You know, got a good, got a program, but do we have a facility to keep them in? We have a ball field, but we'd like to improve it, but, you know, we have a place for, to participate, it's just not as good as we like it compared to not having a facility. And that's, those are the, those are the tough decisions that we may have to make. And as you said, and balancing that with building needs for educational purposes. All these, all these things add to our educational program. It's just a question of priority, and that's the tough part.
Right, to Adam's question about like the other things that we just talked about. So looking at the improvements that were discussed on the middle school site, artificial turf field, the practice baseball fields, and adding lights to the existing ball field. If we do all three of those projects, it's over eight million dollars.
Well, and I just remember, and Matt, I know you were not on, Brad was on, but wasn't that kind of a priority over building new? Was to refurbish our middle school? I thought that was kind of put.
So the natural grass, the inside of the current middle school field is not bad. The actual one to the west of there is the one that needs to be refurbished and reshaped and replanted. It's more weeds and grass. But again, the conversation came down to of having an extra turf type or practice. And I remember three years ago, and I don't remember exactly how it came about, but at that point, at least a couple of board members said, yeah, let's do turf, and let's get moving, and it had done. So, and again, we're still not there. And you're, you're going to have to prioritize what projects are important, and then at that point, that's where we're going to have to look at the dollars.
Do you soon see more classrooms and artificial turf and playing fields?
You know, and I'll be honest, what scares me about artificial turf, I mean, yeah, I get it. It's a maintenance-free, not maintenance-free, but less maintenance. But for any of you that follow football, the NFL Players Association is basically bargaining with the NFL to please put grass back on these fields because of serious injuries. And I'm like, if this is for the middle school, do we really need to put turf down for the middle school? And can we not shape it and refurbish it, like you say? And I know it's extra for janitors, but it's also an extra cost. And I do have a concern with player safety on turf. I mean, I've played on it myself. It's catchy. It's a, it's not good for knees. And I have a little concern about continuing looking at it, artificial turf.
If I remember right, we did Trojan Field. There's different grades of turf you can buy for life expectancy?
There is.
I mean, so we can buy turf if we're buying quality stuff or just buying turf to put turf down?
Mr. Chair, I think we'll get in a little, maybe a little bit deeper.
Yeah, let's.
Then whether or not we want to continue to move forward discussion on the ice.
Well, I'm just looking at the expense side of if we move.
And I understand, I just say, you know, we could be here a long, long time.
I think the boards, I think is the majority saying here we want to continue discussion with the arena, with the hockey association and city about what we will do and what we won't do.
We need to have a work session, because we've got a lot to look at.
Right, right, but we have.
We need to prioritize at some point ourselves, and agree on that, don't we?
Be helpful.
Like, because this is a lot, all of a sudden.
And I think, I think a starting point for the conversation could be like, are we as a district going to, would we rather prioritize these outdoor improvements at the middle school site, or pitch in towards a ice arena? And say we have, we're going to earmark eight million dollars to do maybe one or the other. Is that something that we as a district would be comfortable earmarking? That eight-million-dollar range? And deciding if one set of projects is a higher priority than the other? Because I don't want to lump this ice arena discussion into the classroom needs and the space at the high school. This is a second-tier priority, in my opinion, kind of alongside those improvements to the athletic fields at the middle school.
But yet, the hockey arena has to be in with the high school addition, because if we're going to take money out of that fund, it could be less money we're going to use towards high school, and it could be a bigger referendum.
And that's all part of the discussion we need to have, yes.
Right, and.
So that's what I mean. Do we need to have a work session to have this in-depth discussion amongst the seven of us?
At some point, yes.
I think, and I think we do before, I mean, what are we going to accomplish at the joint meeting with the city? If we don't really have any answers, but a lot more questions. I mean, we have to be prepared to have a factual discussion other than, yeah, it's a good idea. So I would certainly favor us having a work session before we're face-to-face with the city again.
Well, then if we decide we're going to pledge X amount of dollars, that's going to kind of give the committee, whatever, what we have to work with, for what options we're going to have to build arena with, or what we can do and can't do.
Yeah.
On that sheet that you sent out, you had on there the hockey association was going to donate so much money or whatever, or? John?
What's that?
When you sent out that sheet about what each, what's going to donate, you had the hockey arena or hockey association down like one point seven? Is that what it was, or?
Yeah, something like that.
Is that what they have available now, or is that, they got to raise?
That would be what they'd have to raise. And again, I should have never put that sheet together, because everybody's using it as gospel when it was strictly an example. That was my fear, and I made that extremely clear upfront to everybody. It even says example. So that's the problem of actually putting it in black and white, is everybody thinks it's gospel when stuff isn't gospel.
So I think we agree to continue the discussion, as we have agreeance to have a work session, like Matt says, before the city, and move on.
And cities when? Cities is tomorrow night.
There's us tomorrow night, but we'll know more after tomorrow night. And then we got a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth of January. So if we do something before then, at least like Matt says, we can say, hey, this is where we're at.
And dates are going to get a little tough, I'm just going to tell you, because the school board conference is in, they're before the twenty-fifth, and I'm gone some of those days, and I'm also on jury duty. January, February, March, so.
Congratulations.
Probably got Noble for fill in.
Well, he's, yeah, he's going to get some delegation, probably. So again, that's the issue, I'm just telling you. And not always do early morning meetings work very well, and late afternoon don't work, so it ends up being evening, so.
I like evenings. Early AM or evenings?
So, we can find some dates for a work session. We'll try and get them out and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Where are we at, ice arena?
I'm going to reports. John, Superintendent's report.
I had a number of things, but I'll go really quick. I'll just throw out, I met with the ag folks this morning, and they're working on stuff for their presentation in January to the board. And they'll do it at the board meeting, not the operation or instructional. Just FYI for you. I gave you the enrollment projections, so you, I'm not, I won't cover that. One of the sheets that I will send out to you is this potential facilities and grounds investment. It went to the organization or operations group, but it's trying to prioritize those items and where potentially they could be funded. Earn, Safe and Sick Time, our notice to all employees will be going out before the first of January. As of right now, from January one to June thirtieth, it will be based on earning one hour for every thirty hours worked is the approach we're going to do. That may change at July one, but just so you understand, and hopefully everybody, all our employees will understand, they get one hour of Earn, Safe and Sick Time for thirty hours worked, which means, and it runs congruent with their other leaves. So just, it's going to be, there's, a lot of people have a lot of opinions, and the Department of Labor can't even give you straight answers on this yet. So just FYI, it's going to be confusing. And then the last item, the closing date is scheduled for July fourth for the property, which would be the board chair and clerk for that at closing. We don't have a time yet, but I just want to give you a heads up on that.
Mr. Landgarden, a quick question on that. During the Operations Committee, you mentioned that the Earn, Safe and Sick Time, there were like three different options. And did you pick to use one option for everybody?
So as of January one, we will just be for everybody one hour for every thirty hours worked.
Okay.
That may change July one, when we get some more clarity on some things. And hopefully either the Department of Labor or the legislature clears things up.
Okay, thank you.
Any West School? Any, I know Chris said something about January, demolishing West School?
That's the plan right now, yep. He just talked to Dave. Dave has more information than I do.
No deadline on that, when they had it being completed by, or?
No, it was not. He took the option for a thousand, or a hundred dollars. He's finishing a school project right now. He has fuel tanks, and then he's coming down. We expect early January to see him start rolling in. But we don't know how to have a specific date.
Are you excited, John?
That's it.
Instructional Committee?
The one thing not covered, we did have a little bit of a discussion from Mr. Hastings on the high school schedule, and that's continuing, we're just in discussion phases of possibly moving from a block or a modified block, and just discussion only at this point, as that continues. Otherwise, everything else is covered.
Okay, Operations?
John mentioned it, there was stuff, I touched on it there a little bit about the property that we purchased, using that as a lab for agricultural education. And, and the, the high school ag would be the lead on that, and then the college program would be partnering with them and backing them up on assisting with guidance and some of the work. So that's the report that we'll be hearing at the next meeting. I think some preliminary information was handed out regarding that. So we're moving, they're moving forward with putting a program together that we can implement, starting at the end of this year and going into next year.
Okay. Any other business? I know we have a committee that reviews the board compensation every year before the January eighth meeting.
That committee has already met, yes.
They have met already?
Recommendation, that was included in the agenda that was sent out for.
I guess I didn't see that.
For the, for the organizational meeting on.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that, so, okay. So you guys, who was on that again?
The Operations Committee.
Operations, okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was taken care of, so. Okay. Future business, reorganizational meeting, January eighth at seven o'clock. Any other business? We'll call the meeting adjourned.